When does the DDA thing? And I don't was canceled, but they didn't know that it was canceled.
Put that on announcements. Okay, canceled. Oh, now it's a. Six o'clock.
Ready to go?
Yeah.
Okay.
I'm ready.
All right, we'll go ahead and get started. Good evening, everybody. Welcome to the October twenty eighth, twenty twenty four regular city commission meeting starting at six o'clock. Please rise for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, one thing that I do want to put out there, if anyone is here for the TIF public hearing that had to be pulled from the agenda so that it will not be on tonight's agenda. So if you're here for that solely, feel free to leave. Otherwise, it will be rescheduled for a later date. We will move along to the.
That's parking.
Parking? No, not parking.
But it's not on the agenda.
Correct, right. Um, we will move on to approval of the agenda. What is the pleasure of the commission?
I move to approve the agenda as presented.
Support. All right, Abby, call the roll. Mayor Thomas?
Yes.
Commissioner Binkley?
Yes.
Commissioner Searola?
Yes.
Commissioner Ory?
Yes.
Commissioner Fernandez?
Yes.
Great. Uh, onto item number three, public comment. This is for all items that are on the consent agenda or not on the agenda. Please limit your comments to three minutes. And if you wouldn't mind coming up to the podium to speak, state your name and address.
Hi, my name is Jessica Chabot from four oh three State Street, Unit Four. And I just. I missed the last meeting with the parking and I just wanted to express some things that I had concern about. And um, some of my questions that is just kind of like common sense a little bit was like, how does taking away parking spaces help with the parking problem? Because we can't take our cars with us up to our apartments, up to our condos, and we have to park somewhere. And um, there are only, I went around and counted, there will only be a hundred and nine spaces for overnight parking. Now, my household has four vehicles, so let's knock that down right down to a hundred and how many? You see what I'm saying? Like, I know that at least minimum, there's ten vehicles in our condo of where we live, so that knocks it down to ninety-nine. Now, um, the other thing is that uh, the handicapped spots. Now, I have a bum leg and um, I can, I always try not to park in a handicap spot anytime I can because I would not want to take that from an old person if I can manage it, if I can do it. But I'm going to tell you, I am going to take a handicap parking spot if I can't get a spot. I'm not going to walk three blocks. The other thing is, if I have groceries, um, our building, they took away the loading zone in front of Mimi's and they put in a parking spot. So we don't have loading and unloading for that. Um, so I imagine if I have my groceries along with all of the businesses and everyone else who lives there, the loading and loading, we're going to pull in the alley and turn on our flashers and load and unload. Because we're not going to carry things back and forth from here to there, and that alley is very, very congested as it is. And I'm certainly not going to pull in a spot to pay for two hours to unload my groceries, to go somewhere else and park. So um, there's only eight handicap van accessible spaces in town. Three of them are in this lot over here. The other ones are on the bluff and they are not overnight parking. That they're only day parking. It's all day, but you can't leave your vehicle there all night. Um, the other thing that I just wanted to say was, um, you know, I've asked and wondered if you've considered uh, the ADA in the website and I've sent a link for it. And um, you know, small towns are supposed to do self-evaluation, and I'm just wondering if that's ever been done? And if we could get a report if that has been done? Because that seems woefully inadequate. Um, let's see. Okay, so I also want to know, I'd like an answer on, okay, where can we park? If the lots are full? Where, where do we go? And if I come home at three o'clock and there's no spot, okay, I put my car out there for two o'clock. Do I keep on going out and paying and repaying and going around trying to find and wait until there's a spot available there? And the other thing is, I heard that there was some plan about um, uh, handicapped and elderly and that there would be potentially someone who could go around and help such as of the inner shuttle or service or something. But I just want to know in that, not to be sarcastic, but I'd like to know, like, do you put your itinerary in the day, the day before? Is it on call? How many times am I allowed to leave my home? And so those were just some of the concerns that I had. And I also feel as though um, if we had a serious parking problem, why are we leasing an entire lot to Silver Beach Pizza? They're not even paying taxes. They're leasing, and they're leasing all of those spots right next to the beach. But us who are paying major taxes here and have to park overnight, it just feels like it's getting shoveled the burden on us. And I've also seen down at um, like two, two, one, or whatever. I love all these businesses, by the way, in Silver Harbor, that often they will, um, I have seen them shut down the road. There's a lot of parking spots there, and they're allowed to do outside dining for special events or something like that. So I would say that if we can give parking spots to businesses, maybe we don't have a parking problem. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comment?
Anne Barnes, Sixweight Market Street. She did a good job on the parking. Um, but I'm here on another matter. Um, I uh, was looking at the master plan, the agenda that was supposed to be, items to be talked about or, or whatever that was removed for tonight. And so I had some questions for you when I went on your um, proposals or what you call it with a master plan.
The DDA TIF?
Yeah, that one. Um, excuse me, I'm in mama bear mode, so I'm trying to calm down. Um, I've lived here um, a long time, since nineteen eighty-six. Um, my family goes back to my great-great, um, the late eighteen hundreds. My last maiden name is on a World War Two memorial plaque, my grandfather, my great uncle. My great-greats owned a hotel um, on Ship Street, uh, they own property in port. So there's, it goes way back, even though I am a Hoosier. But I've lived here a long time, most of my life, so this is home now. And um, I've watched people come and go. Live, be born, die here. Um, so this is, this is home. So that's why I'm a little in mama bear mode. So I had some questions and some points I didn't know if you had addressed on the page in this, on page seven. It's about key issues and lack of available housing, the city reputation, lack of experience, you're familiar with that. So um, on the lack of available housing, I would, I had a question. It says that, well, there's a, there's a lot of housing outside the city. And we're landlocked by a lake and a river that kind of meanders. So I wonder if you had that, kept that in mind. The city reputation, um, it says the city of Saint Joe has a poor reputation as it pertains to businesses and development friendliness.
I'm sorry to interrupt. Is this about the, the economic development plan?
Yeah, yeah.
So I was. That is on our agenda, and we, we will be going over a lot of this stuff.
Will we have input?
Correct, yes. On each of these agenda items, you will have.
Will this be?
This, this will be in a few agenda items. We're going to present on this today. This is not what was removed.
Because the last time I was here, you, in that one area, you didn't always, you just moved ahead. And so there wasn't opportunity for public input. So that's why I thought I needed to bring this up now.
We, we will give opportunity at each one of these agenda items for you to, to give your input.
Thank you. Um, and the parking is still an issue. She brought up some points I hadn't even thought of, like the um, when you have groceries. And she didn't even mention what if it's snowing or raining and um, the wind off the lake. So that is something to consider for people that are even just renting or visitors. That whole parking issue there too. So thanks.
Thank you. Any other public comment? All right, that will move us along to the consent agenda. Items include regular meeting minutes of Monday, October fourteenth, twenty twenty-four, invoice and tax dispersments, special event applications, Saint Joe today, winter events, purchase of replacement sand filter, Whirlpool Centennial Fountain, and consent to continued representation, Edelson PC. What is the pleasure of the commission?
I move to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Support.
All right, Abby, call the roll. Commissioner Binkley?
Yes.
Commissioner Searola?
Yes.
Commissioner Ory?
Yes.
Commissioner Fernandez?
Yes.
Mayor Thomas?
Yes.
All right, on to item number nine, which is Dickinson Park RFP approval.
All right, good evening. Uh, as the commissioner will recall at the last meeting, uh, you accepted the Land and Water Conservation Fund uh, grant agreement. Uh, this grant is for a matching grant of two hundred and sixty thousand dollars for improvements to Dickinson Park. So as part of that project, uh, staff has had prepared an RFP that was sent out in advance of the project agreement uh, being accepted by the city. And we were expecting responses back by October twenty-second. At that time, we received three responses to the RFP from Boyle Cal Blaylock and Associates, Abin Marsh, and Jones Petrie Rafinsky. Uh, after a thorough review, stack, uh, staff recommends the proposal from Abin Marsh and the amount of seventy-four thousand five hundred. Uh, should be noted that on the surface of the Piro CBA is the low bidder at seventy thousand eight hundred. However, CBA did not include construction testing, which is material testing, concrete testing, compaction testing, those uh, items in their proposal. Uh, they did estimate the cost uh, at an additional ten thousand. Abin Marsh did not include geotechnical services, but estimated it will cost the city approximately four thousand. So with all those expenses factored in, Abin Marsh's total expenses are lower. It should be noted, this amount is under the cost estimate that was submitted as part of the grant application. Any questions?
No questions?
No questions.
Okay. Then what is the pleasure of the commission?
I move to accept the proposal from Abin Marsh of Benton Harbor, Michigan, and the amount of seventy-four thousand five hundred dollars to be paid from the Capital Improvement Fund and to authorize a city manager to execute the appropriate documents on behalf of the city.
Support.
Any public comment on the matter? All right, Abby, call the roll. Commissioner Searola?
Yes.
Commissioner Ory?
Yes.
Commissioner Fernandez?
Yes.
Mayor Thomas?
Yes.
Commissioner Binkley?
Yes.
Thank you. All right, on to item number ten, which is the Economic Development and Marketing Plan.
So I can kick this up as a. No, go ahead. I can kick this off as Andrew and Joe come up. Um, so as I think you might remember, we have been working to reach the certified level for um, RRC. Um, the redevelopment re- ready communities program for quite some time. We're at the essentials level, um, which has allowed us to get some resources to bring in consultants to help us get the job done. So Joe Borgstrom from Place in Maine is here along with um, Andrew Hahn from Cornerstone Alliance. Um, and they are our partners on getting an economic development strategy and a marketing plan in place, and I will let the experts speak to it.
Yeah, you, you kind of stole my thunder a little bit, uh, city manager Hackworth. Um, again, I'm Andrew Hahn. I'm vice president of business development at Cornerstone Alliance. So we have been working uh, with the city over the last two years on moving forward to get the uh, RRC certification, the state. Uh, the beauty in that is when you complete that, you will both be a community that is easy and transparent and uh, simple to do business in and consistent in your practices and also get access to additional tools from the state. So uh, Joe has been great. He's a colleague that I've worked with for many years with deep, deep experience in economic development and downtown development and all kinds of other stuff at state and works nationally now. And um, Joe's going to do a lot of the talking and I'll be up here giving some color commentary probably. So I'll hand it to you, Joe.
Thank you. So we've got two presentations for you tonight. The first one's going to be on the economic development strategy overview, and then I'm going to talk about the community marketing strategy overview. Um, I'm going to ask that questions be held to the end of each section, uh, if you wouldn't mind. Um, and we can go back and revisit specific slides if you, if you'd like to. All right, I want to talk a little bit about um, the strategy itself. I want to talk a little bit about how locally economies work. So folks get a better understanding of kind of where our thought process is and creating the strategy the way we did. Uh, I want you to think about your local economy. We used to say it's a bucket of water, but now it's more like a funnel. Um, and however much, you know, water or money that holds in your local economy is kind of the size of your local economy. If we have a ton of water coming out of the bottom, all the water leaves and we just lose money out of the local economy. Now, traditionally, economic development's role in this is to put more water into the funnel. So this is when we, you know, make things in one community, we sell it outside those, it could be services, those types of things. But anytime that we buy anything that's not from our community, water comes out of the bottom of the funnel. So ideally, what you want is a really big top of the funnel, a really small part of the, uh, bottom part of the funnel. So we can keep more water in that funnel, keep it going around our communities. So when we look at the strategy, and typically when we think about academic development, we have a tendency, especially I imagine this part of the world, we think a lot about whirlpool and manufacturing and those types of things. And when we talk about academic development and the way we teach it and the way we work with communities on it, is that industry is a part of that. That is kind of the core function of academic development. And that's the idea around manufacturing or, or uh, you know, uh, finance and uh, and insurance and those, all those different things that we sell somewhere else. But there are really other, four other components to academic development in our opinion. And we've really seen this kind of take off over the last ten, fifteen years. So we see talent being a big uh, part of, of academic development. So we've, we've run into a situation where employers can't find enough employees. So the idea of helping to train folks to get to a point uh, where they can be good employees or be able to attract more people to your community. We believe in entrepreneurship. You know, when you look at where some of the most successful companies are uh, in the country, they are where the founders lived when they created the company. So we want to help grow uh, businesses and through entrepreneurship. We look at things like place and downtowns and because those help attract entrepreneurs or help, that helps attract talent. Uh, and then lastly, tourism. I put tourism last for a good reason. Uh, tourism is an important part of our economy, it certainly is here in Saint Joe. But it's important that a community builds itself around those other four things. And there is room for tourism. And we always say that if a community builds itself exclusively for tourism, people aren't going to want to live there. But tourists will always find a great community to visit if people love living there. So tourism is an important part of academic development, but it's not the first piece to us. To us, it's kind of the frosting on the cake. So when we start talking about some of these strategies, I want you to think about, when we talk more about tourism, it's going to be on the community marketing piece. Because we feel like a lot of the infrastructure you already have here, and I mean infrastructure, big infrastructure, I'm not going to get into parking or anything like that tonight. Um, but I do think that the, the opportunity to have, you know, additional visitors is important. I want to talk a little bit about the public engagement. So in this process, we started probably about ten months ago. We did a, a big public meeting here in the council chambers. We had a great attendance there. I want to say we had a good forty, fifty people there that night. Uh, we've done a series of focus groups where we've talked to probably two or three different uh, dozen uh, community leaders. We had a focus group uh, with downtown business owners. We had a focus group with uh, property owners. We had a focus group with nonprofit partners and uh, and citizens. And so we had a, a number of different focus groups that we met with through this process. And all that was where we got a lot of, when you see some of the opinions, some of the things we, and we look at what folks told us, this is kind of where we formed some of our opinions on, on how we think the academic development strategy should unfold. Uh, I want to talk about kind of four really big key issues that came up during the process. Uh, the first is a lack of available housing. Uh, we're going to look at some housing numbers here in just a minute, but I think it's important to realize that there are very few available houses in the city. And I want to make sure I, I want to be very clear about when I talk about housing, I mean within the city of Saint Joe. And so I'm not worried necessarily about uh, Ben Harbor or Saint Joe Township or any of the other places. I'm worried about Saint Joe tonight. And so there's a lack of available housing within the city. There is a, a city reputation that is not good, uh, that it's combative or that's not friendly to businesses and to developers. Uh, we think that that's probably a communication issue as much as anything else. And so, but it's important to address that, that there is this uh, feeling that is, uh, the city's difficult to work with. So we want to make sure that we address that. Uh, there's a lack of experience, communication and relationships within the community of the, of developers. There's just not a huge developer base within Saint Joe. And so it's often looking at folks from the outside, the people who are here haven't done a dozen projects or fifteen projects. It's mom and pop developers. In a lot of communities, that's normal. But it's something that's an issue that we want to make sure that folks understand the process and understand when things, uh, how things are supposed to go. And then lastly is that you have a huge amount of market opportunity here for additional business. And we're going to talk more about that on the community marketing side here in just a second. All right, I want to share with you some, um, some of the data that helped inform uh, some of our, our recommendations and our thoughts. And I apologize, this is kind of small font for those of you who are seeing it on the screen for the first time. Your population trend between twenty ten census and what's projected to be in twenty twenty-eight is a slight decrease in population. Not huge, but enough to be a decrease in population. Now, the interesting thing that we see with this is that your household trend actually goes up. So you're seeing fewer people, but more households. How is that possible? It's possible because we're seeing fewer people per household. And I always like to give the example, the house I grew up in, my mom still lives in, uh, they've lived there for almost fifty years, used to have five people in it. Today, it's just her. And we see that in many neighborhoods uh, in Michigan. So we're seeing essentially a de-densification. Some of this is baby boomers uh, aging in place. Some of it is just smaller families. We just don't see as many families as we used to. And the families that we, that we do see are relatively smaller compared to other folks. I always like to tell uh, other Gen Xers, like, think about the families that you knew and the boomers that were in the room. The families that you knew that had, you know, eight, ten, twelve kids. You could probably name two or three people. Now, ask somebody who's Gen Z, and they'll probably name you somebody on a reality, on a reality TV show, because they don't know anybody from those types of families. So we're just seeing fewer things. And a really important stat here, and I neglected to put in the actual presentation itself. But one that's really kind of jarring, and when we talked to folks about this over the last eight, ten months, is that only sixteen percent of households in the city of Saint Joe have kids under the age of eighteen. I heard somebody say wow. That's, that is a wow. Because typically, when I ask communities, what percentage of households in your community have kids, people say fifty percent. It has not been fifty percent in Michigan or in the United States since nineteen sixty. So your case of having only sixteen percent of households having kids is lower than Michigan's average. Michigan's average is about twenty-four percent. Which is right in line with the national average. So the percentage of households without kids in the city of Saint Joe is sixteen percent. That's a big red flag. Because that tells us that we don't have as many families as we should within the community. What's that magic number? I can't tell. I don't know. But I think it should probably be more than sixteen percent. So when we talk about housing and talk about some of these target markets, that informs part of that as well. I want to share with you, um, when we talk about where should we be putting some of the investments? I always like to think about it from a, a, a business standpoint. Where's our highest ROI? Where's our highest return on investment? And if we were to look at all the parcels within the city, uh, we get the highest bang for the buck in the downtown. Because we have larger structures, more density that exists there. And a, almost a three to one more tax revenue generated per parcel or per acre in downtown than we do the rest of the city. So this tells us that if we really want to make sure that we're investing our money wisely within the city, that downtown's a good place to put some of that investment. So one of the things that we did in the process, and I apologize, left my water away over here and be talking all night. Was we wanted to get an idea of where the customers come from. Uh, and we, what we did is we put a, what we call a geo fence uh, around downtown, because that's the primary shopping district uh, here in Saint Joe. And we put a geo fence, and the geo fence tracks folks' cell phone numbers. Now, before anybody freaks out, this is all third-party macro-level data. I can't see where individuals come and where they go to necessarily. I see it from a census block uh, level. So I'm able to tell where, generally where folks are coming from. And generally where they're going to when they're in the district. That's what I'm able to tell. And if you look at this map here, and it's a little hard to see, but if you can see that kind of jagged red lines, that's essentially where most of the customers who come from Saint Joe, or sorry, come to downtown Saint Joe, come from. So it goes just above Benton Township. You, you can see it, it goes over to Milburgh, goes down just, you know, just shy of Hartman. You know, you can see that on that map. Now, that's the typical universe. Is that everybody? Of course not. We know that there's tourists. We know that there are other folks who come to downtown. But for folks who are, are the primary customer for Saint Joe, twelve months out of the year, this is the geographic area in which they come. Now, when I, I'm about to show you this next one, what I'm going to show you is how much money is spent on an annual basis. I'm not going to make you go through the guessing game I usually ask people to do, which is how much money do you think is spent? And what that answer is, and it's hard to see a little bit maybe on this chart, the upper left-hand corner, that twenty-two thousand twenty-three demand, total retail food and drink. This is all money spent on everything from cars to groceries to trips to the, to a restaurant. Almost one point three billion dollars of spending occurs within that trade area that I showed you. That's a lot of money. The next line over, sorry, below that is a breakdown. So the retail trade is just basically the stuff. So it's clothing, it's shoes, it's cars, boats, all that kind of stuff falls under that retail trade. And then lastly, food and drink. And you can think of that as pretty much anything that's prepared by somebody else. So when we look at that demand, we're looking at one, almost one point three billion dollars of demand, and that next column over shows supply. So there is about eight hundred and seventy million dollars of supply. That means there's four hundred and twenty-five point five million dollars that goes out of that trade area every year. So four hundred and twenty-five million dollars leaves the Saint Joe area every year to go somewhere else. Grand Rapids, Holland, Chicago, Detroit, wherever. Now, we anticipate that actually that demand's going to grow from that one point three to almost, to over one point four billion. And so if we, all that supply stays the same, one of my favorite economics phrases, by the way, is ceteris paribus, which means it's not a bug, it's not a Harry Potter uh, um, uh, spell, but it's, it's Latin, means everything remaining constant, which is one of my favorite things, because nothing ever remains constant. But we've got to make assumptions. And the assumption here is that if that supply remains constant, that gap grows from four hundred and twenty-five point five million to over half a billion dollars. That leaves the community every year. Now, I want you to think about that funnel I showed you earlier. How big is the bottom of that funnel right now? It's pretty big. And so what we want to do is we want to target the types of businesses that are going to help us close that funnel, so we can do more of that spending here and have more economic opportunity for our residents to be entrepreneurs. That's where we get a lot of this data where we talk about these numbers. In total, there's more than twenty-three categories, but I will tell you that the ones that we've targeted for Saint Joe in particular, is there are twenty-three different retail categories. So I mentioned that top line item. There's a hundred and ten different subcategories, by the way. So there's twenty-three of those categories that total nearly two hundred million dollars that we think can support up to a half million dollars of, uh, excuse me, half million square feet of retail space. Am I saying half million new square feet? No, I am not. I'm saying that that can be absorbed within the market uh, through vacancies and possibly new construction. So it's not a, I'm not saying half million square feet of new construction. I'm saying half millions, half million square feet of total retail space within the community. All right, I'm going to talk about housing real quick. This is a, uh, so we are in the process. Do you want to talk about the housing study real quick?
Sure.
Um, okay, I'll be real quick because I wasn't prepared to do it. But um, we've looked at both uh, Ben Harbor and Saint Joe uh, separately, but also in the aggregate and what's available, what the demand is right now. And this shows, this does not show over the years, does it? Or is the next, the next one does? Okay. Well, the numbers that, that Joe are going to show you are pretty staggering. And the bottom line to remember is that over the next five years, the city of Saint Joe could support over nine hundred new units into the market. That is across every. That is across every different building type from multifamily to single family to duplexes, live work, et cetera.
All right, so the data I'm going to show you right now is a little bit about the existing housing stock. So the existing housing stock right now, you can see on this chart, that left column that's so tall is one unit detached. Or as we like to refer it in the planning world, a single family. So this is the typical house. The next largest group is that 50 or more, so that's apartments. Now, in Michigan, like a lot of places in the Midwest and a lot of places in the United States, about 50, 60 years ago, we decided that that was going to be the only two types of housing that we're going to have. And there's a whole mess of other types of housing that can fall in between there. So everything from duplexes to triplexes to upper floor downtown. We've seen a lot of those units start to come online here in downtown Saint Joe recently. But that's important because we just have a lack of variety. If you're a customer and you only have two options, and you know there's 12 options out there, you might want to go somewhere else where they've got more options. So the idea of creating more options for consumers is important.
Joe, I want to add to that too, you know, and in our work of attracting businesses to Marion County and Saint Joe, it's really hard when we're dealing with a, you know, a prospect that's a thousand job prospect that wants to come and it's our job to convince them that we can support them with the housing that they need, the talent that they need when we don't have it. So it's, it's not just a nice thing to do in your neighborhood, but there's real economic implications. And it's really putting a brake on the economic growth of the community.
Absolutely. When we, I want to talk about vacancies real quick. When we look at the number of vacant structures for rent, the number of, this, again, this was a survey that's, that's been done and there's a data lag. So, you know, it may not match up to real time today. But you're looking at one for rent vacancy generally overall. When we see seasonal, seasonal or occasional, which is second homes, when you got 418. So when we see those second homes, that's great, we know that's Chicago money coming up here. But what that does is that that creates a vacancy the rest of the time of the year. So that puts more pressure on full-time housing for potential residents and families. And the other thing is interesting, I know there's a large amount of pride and there should be, that you have a high number of homeownership, a high percentage of homeownership here in the city. One of the challenges with that though, is with the lack of ability to have apartments or, you know, duplexes or places for people to rent, young families, it becomes a barrier for young families to be able to come in because they can't afford to buy a house. So having an option again of other things in addition to homeownership is important. And then lastly, I want to show you this, this chart, this is the number of structures by years built. That giant number is 1939 and before, which is a really impressive number. You've got some beautiful historic homes. I don't see that number necessarily as, as a bad thing. I just see that as kind of an overwhelming number in terms of historic structure versus that last one, which is 2020 or later. Again, there's a little bit of lag in there, so it's a few minutes, it's popped up in the last year or two. It wouldn't cover, it wouldn't come up on that. But you can see that relatively recently, we've seen less and less development within the city. And so there's opportunity there, we think. One of the things I want to make sure I point out too, is in the world of entrepreneurship and business development, there's a saying, it's a retail follows rooftops. So the more rooftops you have, the more households you have, the more economic opportunity you have. And so the idea of creating additional new units, what that does for spending. So what I did was I showed, what I'm showing here is the 2028 household spending that's projected to occur in the next four or five years. And that's going to be about $55,000 a year per household. If we were to extrapolate that out to 25, 50, 100 new units, you're looking at 1.3, 2.7, almost $5.5 million of new spending that comes with that. So additional housing units also means additional opportunities. These numbers are averages, so depending on the quality of housing, if it's a nicer house, it's going to be higher, higher than the average. If it's a little bit lower, then it's going to be lower than the average. But this is just to give you an idea on general, on average, of what additional housing units would look like in terms of economic opportunity for small businesses and residents here are looking to create. All right, I'm going to go over some key takeaways of the data we just talked about. You have that small bit of population decline with increased households, but that smaller average household size is creating more demand within that housing in addition to, you know, the outside demand. Because of that smaller occupancy per housing unit, we're not seeing a need for big, huge houses anymore. We're seeing more need for smaller housing types. You have a very economically diverse and resilient economy. You know, I know Whirlpool, Whirlpool is a big contributor economically here, but you have a very diverse economic base, and I think you guys are on solid footing when it comes to that. You have strong local employment, again, beyond Whirlpool, you have other economic-based employers that you can lean on. The taxable value efficiency exists in that, in downtown, as opposed to some of the other commercial areas within the city. And again, you have a historic mid-century housing stock, which is great. But again, the need for new product is also important, as well as those high homeownership rates are great. But we still need the, we still need product for folks who are looking to rent and to become more familiar with the community before firmly committing and buying a home. And then again, the low vacancy rates, you, I hate to hesitate to say that you're, you're fill, you're full, all of your housing is full, but you're pretty close. You know, there's a, there's an effective fullness that goes along there. I want to talk a little bit about the academic development recommendations. So first and foremost, I know it's, it's on the agenda for one of these nights to do the tax increment financing plan. There's a couple of different tools you guys are going through your DDA. I'm a big believer in this. I think it's really important that the community establish this tool that 300-plus other municipalities have in the state. If you're going to look to address things like long-term parking, like infrastructure improvements to the downtown, the tax increment financing plan is the, is the lowest hanging fruit in order to do that. People always wonder where does the money come from? It comes from the improvements that occur over time and that you can capture that taxes. And I think that's something that's worth pursuing. Both the city, and you can talk a little bit here about Saint Joe Township, but there is a need to address Niles Road. That is a struggling commercial area, it's not downtown, but it is something that needs to be addressed. And you want to talk about that briefly?
I can, real quick, so we're, we're working on a project similar to this, but a little more modest in scale with the Saint Joe Charter Township. And their biggest economic driver is that commercial corridor that is a shared one with the city. And tapping into that, right, it's still active, it's not a ton of vacancy, but it's really kind of, it's older, it feels a little more dated. And we see some opportunity to think of that as more of a mixed-use corridor. And as we've talked to, to them, they felt the same way. And this is really recommending looking at doing a plan for that area, figuring out how you fund some of those modest improvements, the streetscape, the, you know, the banners, the walkability, the activations. And there's some, some ways that you could actually do that potentially in conjunction with the township as a shared effort. So more detail, I want to be efficient, move along, we've covered a lot, we have a bit more to cover. But that's a really, something that is not talked about a lot. It's not just about downtown, that's the jewel and the crown, but you have other assets too.
You also have a Brownfield redevelopment authority, and we would really like to see you guys leverage that authority more in addressing some of the vacant properties that could be converted to development. And we'll talk more about that later. Want to talk about other high priority issues? As Andrew mentioned, you guys have the demand for nine, up to 900 units over the next five years. That's a lot of housing units. Do I expect you guys to do 900 units? No, I do not. But I'm telling you what the demand is. And so that there is that opportunity for under, underperforming parcels or the opportunity to increase density to an appropriate level in the downtown core, as an example, is a way to do that. There are also a couple of other ways to do that, and that's also on our priority list, is to allow and encourage accessory dwelling units, which is a very fancy term for above apartment, above garage apartments and/or, you know, those small, like mother-in-law suites, those types of places that can kind of, kind of do just squirrel away units here and there. You can add, you know, density to blocks. Also, when you do like a mother-in-law unit, you have the ability for seniors to age in place. And so that becomes something where perhaps the kids move into the house and, and mom or dad and mom and/or dad move out to, you know, the mother-in-law suite. So it's this opportunity to be able to add additional units and not drastically change the character of a community. One of the things, oops, keep going, we'll do fast there, all right. One of the things, I think there should be a comprehensive look at zoning and on the whole for downtown. But in particular, I'd like you to consider eliminating the commercial office zoning and convert that just to downtown zoning. I know you guys have a Main Street overlay, which addresses a lot of that. I'm not personally a huge fan of overlays because I think that just kicks the can down the road to actually fixing the real problem, which is the existing zoning. So I would really encourage you guys to take a look at that, to convert that to just general downtown zoning. I think your general downtown zoning is perfectly fine. I think it encourages the things you want to encourage. I think the office, the commercial office zoning is kind of a relic of the seventies and eighties. And I think it's just time to update kind of how you, how you look at those things. Expanding two-family zoning or missing middle zoning, so things that allow for duplexes. You have some incredible historic buildings in the near neighborhoods that are quadplexes, that are, you know, four apartment buildings. Those, you can't build those in the city if somebody wanted to build one today. You have this amazing historic structure, you have these amazing resources, and it's not legal. So I would say just go back and look at what you used to do really successfully. And I think that's one of the things we'd want to highly encourage you guys to do. And then the last two on the high priority list, one is to create a development guide. I think you guys have in place development processes that makes sense. I think that there's a breakdown in communication between the expectations of the development community and the city staff of whether or not something is outlined as appropriate or not, and what the expected timeline is. And I know the city is addressing this right now and creating this development guide. But I think being able to help break it down, I'll show you an example here in just a second, of how to help make that better communicated to mom and pop developers makes sense. And then lastly, adding staffing, particularly a downtown and/or corridor director, somebody whose job it is to do that for downtown. Yes, you have Saint Joe today who kind of does it. You have other groups that kind of do different portions of it. Most communities in the state of Michigan, most successful communities have a director who's in charge of downtown. I think adopting that best practice makes sense. And then lastly, reviewing the cities, reviewing bylaws of your appointed boards and commissions. A best practice is to make sure that there are term limits, that you have folks who are on, on a commission or a board for a certain amount of time, and then they move off and then they come back on. Institutional knowledge is great, sometimes institutional knowledge is a double-edged sword. Because sometimes people go through to say, well, we tried that 20 years ago and it didn't work. Well, maybe it's a different time now than 20 years ago. So just making sure that there's new blood coming on allows you to, to engage the citizenry on a different level in some of those instances. And then this is the example I wanted to show you right now. I know you guys are in the process of developing something very similar to this. But just, this is a development guide, a couple of pages from that, this is what the city of Grand Haven does. This is a really nice piece. It outlines the specific steps, it outlines timelines, it outlines who's responsible and the fees. And it's a simple one-pager per thing. And you guys have kind of a very rough version of this currently on your website, but it really kind of needs to be stepped up in terms of level professionalism and, and the idea around the accountability on that timeline. So folks know what to expect when they go through the process. Lastly, in the medium priority stuff, you guys are in the process of going through your parking study. I'm not a parking, I'm not a parking expert, I'm not going to stand here and talk about parking tonight. You guys have probably hours and hours and hours of that coming up before too long. You guys know what I'm talking about. But the, but the idea of you, you're addressing this and you're actively addressing it. I just, I just encourage you to go, go with that process and go through that process as part of that. It's also time to update your master plan. It was last updated in 2016 in the state of Michigan. It's actually required by law to do it every five years. I've yet to see a municipality prosecuted for it, so don't worry about that. But the idea is you should still be following the best practice of having it done every five years. Creating a retail recruitment strategy, and that's something that a downtown professional would do if you had a downtown director. But to actively market properties and to do it on behalf of the community and work with the existing Realtors for these places to be able to create a brand and strategy to help elevate Saint Joe in the, in the minds of potential businesses. You also need to promote redevelopment opportunity sites, we'll talk more about that under community marketing. And then continue your retention and expansion efforts. Cornerstone Alliance, I know is a big partner in all of that and making sure that you're visiting core employers and going to do that. That's, that's the least sexy in all the academic development world is to go do retention visits and that kind of stuff. It is also the most fundamental. It is the blocking and tackling of academic development and to continue to do those efforts, I think is important. All right, that's what I have for the academic development portion. I know I probably went just a few minutes long. Any questions from the, from the council on any of that? We might even need to move back up to that slide in case somebody has.
We will give the bridge version of the marketing stuff. We know we've got a lot to talk about, but definitely want to address if there are questions on this. I think this is really important stuff. But most of these will be, you know, there'll be opportunity to address them as they're being brought forward more seriously for consideration. But really want to hear if there's additional information or questions or thoughts.
So it's amazing. I mean, I think there's a lot of really valuable information there, it's, it's really impressive. But I'm going to play devil's, devil's advocate because you're going to get people that say, I just like Saint Joe the way it is. So can you, can you, I know you can respond to that, so, so will you respond to that?
Well, I guess I would say that there's no community stays static, right? You're either growing or you're shrinking, and that's a reality. And you are shrinking, I mean, that's what the data tells us. So, you know, and if you go up and down the coast from New Buffalo to Harbor Springs, every city along there has had new development in the last, you know, either as it right now or last year or three years ago. And there hasn't been a new development in downtown Saint Joe since this building in 1997. And I honestly couldn't tell you the last significant private investment in the DDA district. And there's great stuff with Harbor Shores and, and other areas adjacent to downtown. So status quo is an option, but I, I don't think it's the option that most people would prefer or that, you know, really is going to work for any community.
It's the Boulevard Hotel 1986.
Thank you.
So I hope that's a good, a good answer, it's a pretty direct one, but you're either growing or you're shrinking.
My question is related to timing, as, as you know, a lot of these things are in process. We're looking at our ordinances, we're making sure they align with our goals and our vision. We're working on the, the RRC. What, what is a, what is a reasonable timeframe for us to expect to have this accomplished? Based on your experience, based on what you've seen? All of this stuff, I try to do this with about a five-year max timeline. Now, the only exception I'll make for that is the 900 units. You know, I don't know if that's going to be really super realistic within those five years. But typically five years at max 10, I don't like to go beyond five because there's often turnover that occurs within five years that people start to lose focus of, you know, of the ball, so to speak. So I like to try to keep it within a workable timeframe, and typically it's that five-year window.
I want to add too, with regard to the question around growth and being static or not, this is all based on community input, and it's about helping the community realize its vision for growth, right? It's what's in the master plan, what's in the downtown plan, what's been in all these other opportunities for public input. So it's not about, you know, throwing the gates open to just any old development. It's, it's helping the community be efficient in the way they approach their vision for what, what it should be.
I promised to go faster in the community marketing piece. If there are any other questions?
You look like you're like poised to ask something.
No, no. I mean, I think it was important to go kind of slow because, I mean, I don't think it went slow, but it's a lot to cover, so it was important to.
Well, again, I mean, and my apologies for, I mean, this is about 80 pages worth of content I'm trying to squeeze in here to do this quickly.
And we'll take public comment at the end of all this?
Yes.
Sorry, I'm working on it.
Oh, we can take public comment on the academic development, Reggie?
Do you want to kind of pause and, well, because we usually do a motion a second and then take public comment and everything, so.
Okay, well, we'll just wait just a one second. We made a couple of tweaks just before the meeting started and Emily is, we caught her off guard a little bit, sorry.
No, 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 I just have multiple versions open, I want to have the right one.
Looks about right. All right, I'm going to talk about the community marketing strategy, which is, which is a companion to the academic development strategy. It's the other side of the coin, is likely to refer to it. And this is how we sell the community. And what I mean by that is selling and communication are often, you know, kind of confused. But I want to talk about the goals. First and foremost, the goals for this are to retain, it's going to be retain and attract businesses and retain and attract residents. We want to make sure that we keep the businesses that we have, we want to keep the residents that we have, but we also want to expand that, that window of folks to be, you know, potential business owners and new residents to the community. We also want to redevelop key sites, and there are several that have been identified over the years as part of the downtown vision plan, as part of the master plan, and we'll talk about three of those here at the very end. And then we want to encourage local engagement about getting people involved and commenting on things and not just the nasty Facebook comments. But the idea of, I say that because it happens everywhere. But the idea of actually having genuine engagement and asking, getting people involved and all this. And then, of course, we want to improve the city's reputation. We want to make sure that Saint Joe We want to make sure that St. Joe is seen both as a community and as a governmental organization that is somewhere that people want to be where business and development want to be. I want to share with you real quick. We we came up with a brand statement and I'm I'm not going to read it. I would, the original plan was for me to read this and I'm not going to do that because I know we're kind of stuck on time. But the idea is that St. Joseph is a very high quality of life community. And you've got a lot to offer and that you have a lot to offer businesses. You have a lot to offer residents. You have a lot to offer visitors. And the idea is creating a quality place that people want to be a part of. And I'll let folks read this on your own, but we felt very strongly that talking about all the things that make you guys great about having, you know, unique downtown businesses and shops and just the overall experience of being here in St. Joe is really, really hallmark to who you are and what you're about. We looked at your existing assets and to us, really the main existing assets from a marketing standpoint are your website and your social media. I will tell you that on the whole, I think your website is is perfectly fine. I think it's a solid B to B plus. I think that there's a couple of opportunities about consistency that I'll talk about here in just a second. Across the website, I don't have a problem at all with anything, any things that really that you're doing. I know this piece on the right here was was actually created during the city manager search as a way to kind of help market St. Joe. I love it. I would love to see you guys do more of this kind of stuff and not necessarily for city managers. But I mean this for like all potential residents to come to St. Joe about why you want to sell this place. And I really like that piece and it's something I hope that you guys continue to build on. Some of the recommendations, one of the most important things that I think communities always, always, always overlook is the need for professional photography. You know, a picture is worth a thousand words. You can use professional photography a million times. There's, you know, a number of ways to be able to pay for that through, you know, a DDA or or through, you know, even having a city contract. But the idea of putting a professional look at 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 your community really cannot be underscored is the number one marketing recommendation we give to virtually all of our communities because it's so overlooked. The number two thing is to celebrate the wins. When things happen, talk about it. You know, people show up and they're not happy a lot of times. And so part of this is not just talking about the bad stuff, but it's talking about the good stuff, things we want to celebrate. And it's not just city stuff. It's, you know, it's it's a school win the the conference title, like the city is the spokesperson for the community. And so being able to talk about these things is important and to celebrate all those small wins that you have throughout the year. I mentioned this a second ago, consistency in the website. There's a little bit of inconsistency between the toolbars and the navigation and blah, blah, blah. And all of that just happens with organically to a website over time. And anybody who's ever managed you know, multiple years, it just creeps in. The idea of maybe once a year going through it with a fine teeth comb and saying, all right, what links are dead? What types of improvements? As an example, you have your, you actually have a photo gallery on your web on your website, which I think is is a really nice idea. And then you go there, you realize that it's it's obviously done. They're well intended photographs, but it's amateur photography and it's really small. And it's nothing that that anybody could use to market the community. So the idea of being able to populate things with that with, you know, good photography is important. A couple of things, social media related, I think you have one too many Facebook pages. You've got a DPW page, which seems to really echo, was it? Oh, sorry.
There you go. There you go. Thank you.
I don't know why you want to punish the people at home. But you've got one too many Facebook pages. I think the DPW content is very repetitive to the city and there's no reason that, you know, whatever DPW content is being couldn't be just part of the main city page. I think keeping public safety separate makes sense because it's different content. And it's it's built a different audience. I think that makes sense. I think making better use of Instagram. So again, one of the things that your your city tends to be is it tends to trend a little older. If we want to market to young families, we got to be on the footprint what they are, which is Instagram. Don't worry, I'm not recommending you guys take on TikTok or anything like that yet, but I think Instagram, somebody wants to back there. But of leveraging tick, excuse me, leveraging Instagram to talk about the beautiful things, because your city does photograph so well. I shared a Dropbox photo of just some of the photos I took during the process. And it's just, you know, the idea, if you were to have professional photography come in here and you can use that to populate Instagram and have, you know, follow the, you know, hashtag St. Joe or St. Joseph, hashtag Instagram and repost other people talking great things about your community. So that's important. And then making sure you have a presence on LinkedIn. You have a presence technically, like you have a page. And that's it. I think there's one follower and it might have been done by that one person years ago. But if you are looking to develop the city's reputation amongst businesses and amongst developers, they're not going to necessarily be on Instagram. They're going to be on LinkedIn. And so making sure that you have content that's appropriate, your development guide, doing that kind of stuff, promoting that your RRC certified, all that should be on LinkedIn more so than a Facebook or an Instagram. So the idea of making better use of your social media and a more defined social media store. We looked at defining some of your your audiences. So most importantly, the current and prospective residents, current prospective businesses, current and prospective visitors, and then developers and investors. So when we look at this, who we market the city to, these are the four groups that we spend the most time thinking about. And I will tell you a little bit about the residents. We we identified based on who's already here. So one of the things that we did is we did what called market segmentation. There's a number of of groups that do this type of work around the country. We used one through Esri, which kind of gives socio economic and socio demographic information on different types of of families and households. And so we looked at kind of who you guys are, who you need to attract, and we kind of put those things in a blender and came up with these groups. So first and foremost, young professionals and entrepreneurs as potential targets, families with children. We're also looking at active retirees, remote workers, and artists and creative professionals. Again, everyone, everyone values a high quality of life. But when we look at these potential for target markets for potential residents, that this is a very high correlation between what you have to offer in these particular groups. This is not to say this is the only people that you're marketing to, but these are the these are the folks that we think encompass a lot of the folks who'd be great fits for as new residents for for the community. I want to talk about key messages quickly. Again, underscoring the high quality of life that you have here, the lake, nature, golf, all that kind of stuff. You've got good schools. You have activities for kids. You got stuff that goes on all year round. It's a very active lifestyle here. You know, there's a really good opportunity for live work balance, which most of us, if you're over the age of 40, we don't know what live work balance is. But it's very important to folks who are Gen Z and into younger millennials. So making sure that you can point out this is a great place for that, especially if you're a remote worker. And then there's a thriving art scene. That's a growing arts and culture scene here. About businesses, the key target markets that we're looking at, we're looking at developers and retail and restaurants. Again, we're kind of broad. We're not going to, we're not trying to pigeonhole too much. But again, these are the three audiences that we're looking at and our messages for these are really about, again, the high quality of life. If you're a developer, this is a place where you want to develop. That you have a strong resident visitor markets. This is a good place where you're not going to, you know, you're not worried about foot traffic. You've got a growing culinary scene. You've got good locally owned restaurants. And you have a very strong on that retail demand that there is economic opportunity here for businesses. And that's those are the key messages we want to talk about there for visitors and target markets. By the way, some of this, I want to make sure I put out, just to give myself a little bit of props. I took those two pictures right there. But again, you have so many great photographic opportunities within the city. And if you can, you guys can use to have, use that to leverage to market, I think that's important. Other target markets for for visitors, family travel, again, because of so many of the opportunities that you guys have here between the carousel and the children's museum. Culinary tourism, we think is a great target, outdoor adventure, and then arts and culture again. And I'll go through key messages quickly. Again, the outdoor activities, children's activities, unique locally owned restaurants. So how do you do all this stuff? It's echoing these messages in your social media posts, in the Instagram posts. It's about what a great place this is to live, the great opportunity that's here. Some of that might be geeky talking about market data for for businesses. Other parts of it is just going to be pretty pictures, talking about the things that are going on. The key sites, based on the downtown vision plan and based on the master plan, these were the three sites that we looked at specifically. One's a public private site, so that on the northern part of that of site number one is privately owned. The the bottom part is a public parking lot. Two is three public parking lots and three is the as another lot as well. Again, one of the things I want to make sure we talk about these sites is recognizing the impact that the parking has and that anything that would go in those spots would need to address parking as part of all that because it turns out some people care about parking in this town. And so I do want to make sure I underscore that.
I'll also glance back to that impact residence too, right? I don't remember those numbers, but what was 100, 125 new residents equated to 10 million in spending, something like that?
I don't remember off the top of my head.
Sure, it's that. So. 200 units. Okay. So again, just there's a reason to do development and it's not just for more people, it's for more opportunities for people that are already here that own businesses that could be employees in those businesses, et cetera.
So again, I apologize. I know this was 77 pages or 78 pages where the content that I've tried to pack into a few slides and I'll be happy to answer any questions with the council or anybody else might have.
Questions? No.
The comparison is the alternative is to do nothing and not do these developments than maintaining, you know, our asset management. It it becomes harder and harder to maintain and keep things at the level they are. And to do nothing, you know, would put more pressure on those that are here, you know, to fill that gap. So this is, this is an absolutely no brainer to, you know, reinvest in ourselves, you know, to share what we have, what we've built with more people for the benefit and betterment of that said, of that community. So I love this.
Yeah, I feel like I've heard bits and pieces of all this stuff over the last three years, and this is just a very comprehensive, you know, however many minutes he spent talking about it is, you know.
Probably too long if you ask those folks, but.
That was great. Yeah, thank you for that presentation.
Appreciate it.
Yeah, I do appreciate the numbers that we have in there too. I mean, I think that we all can talk and try to get a sense of what it is, but really seeing, you know, and start contrast the fact that 16% of our households have kids versus our state average is a good a good inspiration point to put it to put it nicely.
Thank you.
Know that you have a local partner that can help with implementing just about all of this. So it's an honor for us to be able to be that partner. And it's been a great, you know, a couple of years that I've had a chance to do that. So much more to come.
And I can't say enough about how fabulous it has been to work with Andrew and Joe. I mean, this has been such an incredible experience. Thank you, guys.
Any other questions, comments from the commission?
I think I just want to clarify. So we're just approving the, I just want people to know, we're approving the strategy and the marketing plan is presented. We're not approving small little details like ordinance changes or we're just doing a comprehensive approval of the plan. Correct?
Correct. So this is about adopting the plans. And then there will be efforts step by step to tackle each of the items that are in the plan.
And these these steps are necessary cogs in the redevelopment ready certification.
Exactly right.
So they have to be done.
Exactly right.
I move to approve the economic development strategy and marketing plan as presented.
I support. Great. Public comment. Yeah, wouldn't mind you.
Karen Leffs, resident at 2606 Old Lake Shore Road. And I thought it was great information. Thank you for that. It was it was very good. But I'd like us to think maybe one thing about, we talked about the downtown development and that area. And I think we may have an opportunity to expand our thinking across the river on the north side of the river. There's property owned by the city of St. Joe. Some of it is co-owned by St. Joe and Benton Harbor. And I think there's new opportunity to activate that and also even for parking. So when you go to Chicago, sometimes you people go on the north side or the south side of the river and don't really think anything about crossing the river, going to the other side. I know some people don't want to walk that far or can't walk that far. But I think we also have a city lot, parking lot by in at Harbor Shores that maybe a lot of people aren't aware of that I believe is all day, all night parking. But it's not posted. So I think there's some opportunity for parking even on the north side of the river that could help down what we typically call our downtown. And maybe we should be envisioning our downtown as a little broader. I know that's kind of out there, but to activate the the river front more. So that was just my thought. So.
Yeah, thank you. Any other public comment?
You can go next.
I just want to keep you here the rest of the night anyway. That's my neighbor. First of all, Joe and Andrew, I kind of was having a hard time sitting there and not jumping up and cheering. Because the thing those guys are saying are the things that we've needed to hear and do something about for years and years. Now, I've spent 15 years or so approximately on the plan commission, been through two of the revisions of the master plan and need to hard press to find five things that I could put count on my fingers that say that have been done that were recommended in that plan. And just a little side story here. Most of you, I think, probably know that I owned a property on Main Street in the 600 block a few years ago and ultimately got it changed into a an overlay district because I didn't think we could go so far as a downtown area zoning for it. But it was interesting at that time. I owned a property and it just so happened that over a period of a few months, I could have bought all but one of the properties in that block. So instead of being the five houses there, I would have had four properties that took up all but 66 feet of that. And I think I probably could have bought the other one if I really tried it. And I looked at that and I saw the things that were being done in Petoskey and Holland and Traverse City. A lot of areas that I've been to where they've taken whole blocks like that and they made developments that would have instead of being five houses, it would have probably been housing for about 20 units, maybe, maybe 22 units, something like that, which is something that we so desperately need. But I looked at it and I looked at our ordinances and I said, there's no way you can get this done. And I don't think any of you were were on the commission when I finally got through changing the zoning on Main Street. But it took three and a half years in working on it and then just keep plugging away and plugging away and eventually, and there was nobody really against it. It just took that long. And that's one of the ways that we get our reputation as Saint No. And we really, really need to work on that because there's so many things that could be done to improve the city. And you probably hear me say no about a lot of things, but there's a lot of things I'd really like to see get done, but they never seem to come up. So.
That's why we're doing this. That's right. That's why we're doing this. Exactly.
Thank you.
Thank you. Please.
Hi, thank you. I'm the debt Jack's neighbor, 828 Lyons Park Drive. So I like to study. I'm kind of, I was actually here for the TIF thing, but it was good to listen to your presentation. So it was very enlightening. So I do agree. I I'm excited that you guys actually brought him in here. So I have a couple of questions, a couple of things, suggestions that I had is the property that used to where the WCA used to sit, a gorgeous building that got knocked down and we're seeing just a blade of grass for, I don't know how many years it's been. What, Jack? 10? Something like that. More than 10. So, um, yeah, so, oh, you know, we're talking about parking. We're talking about retail development. We're talking about housing. I don't know who still currently owns a property. I did at one time, I thought, but I'm suggesting that. And the other suggestion I had when you're staying outside the boundaries of downtown St. Joe, which I think is St. Joe Township, maybe not. Off of Niles Avenue is Cedarwood. You know, when I take my kids to Dairy Queen, you know, I'm seeing the pigeons and everything flying around Cedarwood. And it was too bad that they didn't want the contract to possibly bring in the VA hospital or VA center down in that building to take advantage of that building. And I just had a brain. I had another suggestion on another building, but I already forgot about it.
That's why we're hoping this all will help develop. Exactly.
So, yeah, so those, I'm glad to see the study, but we do have these opportunities. We're not taking advantage of it. And and as a side note, because I know there's a lot of contractors who don't really want to work here or deal with development. So I'm just saying, we got to find an easier path or a righteous path, but somewhat as a fluid path. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comment? Yes.
And at 608 Market Street, behind the property Jack used to own. His former dog sitter. Thank you for the presentation and having worked for an advertising agency for years, that was a very good presentation, especially in marketing approach. And I just want to say there are some awesome photographers in this area that may not be professional, but you could utilize them. You've seen them on Facebook. They're very good. But back to my neighborhood, which was Jack's neighborhood for a while. I just want you to keep in mind also, and I didn't hear this promoted enough. Having lived here long enough, having worked downtown, having been in the advertising agency for years, having that marketing approach and listening to people, I'm a listener. I'm the quiet one that sits there and listens and then puts things together. People also come to here, come here because of the historic area. And I haven't heard history brought up in any of this. But there was a line I saw in the marketing that popped out, says every street tells a story. And that is so true about St. Joe. And that is one of the attractions. And that was one of our marketing, the marketing strategies years ago, the past and future. The historic area, the downtown is very important. People come to see the houses. They come to see what a neighborhood used to look like. And people come from out of town just to walk their dogs, but then they get hungry. And then some of them, then with their dogs, they have to go to the fuzzy butt. We have a fuzzy butts in our town. I mean, how many have that? So, and they come to the lake. It's amazing how many people come to just watch the sunset and then go for a walk or have already been for a walk in the historic neighborhood. Please don't lose that in all of this. It's very important. As I mentioned, I have family on the World War II monument. And I have, I would love to come and show you, I forgot to bring, I have a photo album going back generations at the cannon. I heard stories about where the original cannon balls are. So there's a lot of that that could be part of this and being our attraction. We don't want to be just another New Buffalo, South Haven. That's not what we're about. And you have, you have an awesome his, history with Whirlpool that is being lost. And you need to tap onto it quickly before that history is gone, how it started and everything. Don't lose that. We need to know why up to drive is up to drive, why up to middle school is up to middle school. Why there's a barrel factory apartment comp downtown, down in the neighborhood there. Why there's Tuscornia Beach? Why is it Tuscornia? That is something that you could emphasize too. And you have good resources here that can do that, good agencies here that can do it, good writers, good photographers already here. You just need to tap into them. And these guys that, that worked with you today, I mean, they've, they've opened your eyes to some things. We already have a lot here. We need to use it. Thanks for letting me come up twice.
Of course. Thank you. Any other public comment?
Carl Meyer, one of the owners of 505 Pleasant Street, 505 Properties. Excellent presentation. And some of the information that was submitted to you, it showed area number one is a lot, vacant lot, just reference to that. That property is for sale. The city is right next to it. I have offered to buy area number three, the parking lot for two years. Not a word from the city, not a word. So if you want development, it's here, but you got to act on it. You can't sit back. People are going outside the city. You see what St. Joe Township is doing, Bering Hills. That's going to be 700 to 1,000 residents in that area. So act fast. That's all I can say.
Thank you. Any other public comment? All right, Abby called the roll. Commissioner Orie?
Yes.
Commissioner Fernandez?
Yes.
Mayor Thomas?
Yes.
Commissioner Binkley?
Yes.
Commissioner Sorolla?
Yes.
All righty, moving us along to item number 11, Anchors Way High Water Infrastructure Grant Requests.
Emily is bringing up a PowerPoint for this, so it is on 168 of the packet, if you have the packet in front of you.
Thank you.
Okay, so I'm requesting approval of several things for the Anchors Way High Water Infrastructure Grant tonight. The grant covers the design and taking the project up to the bid phase, so it doesn't cover construction. So what we're requesting is the selected alternative, approval of the selected alternative recommended by Wade Trim and the city. Also a budget amendment in order to take care of that increased scope of the selected alternative. And I'll talk about that in a bit. Change order with Wade Trim to add design services for water main replacement and sewer rehabilitation required by the alternative. And then finally, a proposal with Point Blue to complete a limited site environmental investigation of the soil and groundwater so that we don't run into any surprises during construction. Can you go to the next slide, please? So I think we're all aware the Anchors Way floods when it rains. And depending on how much rain we get, the volume makes a difference on how much water is over the road. So next slide, please. So the flooding has been going on for a long time. And had it been easy to fix, we would have done it a long time ago. But the issue that we have are the low points of the road are below the 100-year flood plain. So if we connect storm sewer to the St. Joe River or Morrison Channel, when lake levels come up, then you have permanent water on the roadway. Now, what you can do is you can put in a check valve. I'll keep talking.
Yeah.
And then you can pump it off, but that would be the first ever pump station, storm water pump station. So it's a complex problem. And the other thing I put on there is Public Works does have to respond after rainfall events. And over the past seven years, they spent nearly $62,000 on that. And if I could, I'm just going to put a plug in for our computerized maintenance management system. We use a program called City Works and we're able to track that now because we have that capability to do that. So. So just the progress on the grant, the city commission approved the application back in November of 2022. We learned from Eagle in the summer of 2023 that we were going to receive a grant. And then the commission approved the grant application, or the grant agreement rather, in August of 23. As far as the progress the design team has made since that time, we've worked through the alternative analysis process. We've selected the alternative or we're recommending a selected alternative. We held a public meeting and we also held a pre-application meeting with Eagle. That's supposed to help us smooth over when we get into the final design phase, getting the project permitted. So city staff has performed the grant administration, including amending and extending the contract for the grant. And we've also hired the topographic and geotechnical services in-house. Originally, that was under Wade Trim's contract, but we were able to do it more cost effectively in that manner. So our staff time also is part of the match that we have to meet on the grant. Now Wade Trim, the engineering firm on this, is uniquely qualified for the project. They actually were hired by MDOT in order to solve the, if you're onto the next slide.
Oh, sorry.
You were right on it. So Mark Prebeck, their hydraulic engineer is excellent. And basically what I'm trying to show you in these two pictures is the high lake, lake level on the left is when Lake Michigan's static. So there's no wind in the, when we have northwesterly winds or westerly winds that occur over a certain duration over the fetch. It actually pushes the lake up on our side. So it's called setup. And so we definitely had to take that into account when we were working on our selected alternative. And this is just a graph showing a single event as an example. It was in March of 2020, over a two-day period, the lake level rose 1.6 feet higher than it had been before that. Now, under the selected alternatives, the preferred alternative at the time of the grant application was the so we wanted to do like a levy system. But as we got into the analysis, we were going to have to get too far onto private property. It wasn't practical to do it. So we looked at raising the road. And by reconstructing about 2,200 feet of it, it proves to be the best solution for both Lake Michigan levels and the, those higher levels due to the wind impact. And again, the selected alternative, it increases the scope of the project. When you reconstruct a road, you don't want to leave bad utilities under it. So we have to replace the water main. We think we can rehabilitate the sanitary, that actually costs less money. But the island is, has a his, has a history of contamination. So now we're doing more extensive earthwork and so we have to have expanded services for environmental to check it out. That's why you have the change order from Wade Trim and the proposal from Point Blue tonight. I just wanted to show you this really quick. The picture on the left shows the centerline profile of the road. And at this location on the road, that fill is 2.1 feet to 1.2 feet. So we're talking raising the road a fair bit in order to make it traversable when we have high lake levels and high wind events. The, the red line there on the right-hand side is the extent of what we're talking about for the reconstruction. The green dots are private driveways. Because we're raising the road, we'll have to do temporary grading improvements because we have to blend that grade in and make it work so people can scrape their cars and such. And the blue dots just simply Anchors Court will have to do the same there. Next slide. So the two alternatives that we narrowed it down to, alternative one was really kind of the burn plan without a burn because we couldn't build it. So, you know, that, that cost was 1.42 million. And that includes gravity storm sewer ditching, again, our first ever storm water pump station. And that provides protection up to Lake Michigan levels of 583.25, which probably doesn't really mean anything to anyone. But what it really is, is that about 10% of the time in any given year, you're going to have water over the road. It can vary in depth depending on the recurrence of period of the storm. In this case, if we have a 100-year storm that occurs, we actually have 1.5 feet of water at the low points in the road. So alternative two, again, we're going to raise the road. We're recommending this. That's 1.568 million. I do need to clarify that that is the road and the drainage improvements only. So you're getting an apples to apples comparison from that standpoint. But you have to add about 900 to a million, $900,000 to a million dollars to that, to do the other utility improvement. So it brings that total to about $2.5 million. So again, what do we get out of that? A new higher roadway? We're going to build a storm sewer system. The pump station in this case can be smaller because the, the road's raised. It doesn't have to pump the water off as quickly. This is, provides protection up to a lake level of 584. And that is about a 35-year storm or reoccurrence interval. So less than 3% of the time, the road should have water on it with this option. So moving on to the grant and some of the money on this money side of this. Grant amount is $144,800. The city matched 37,000 and some change, the total of 182,000. And actually 14,000 of city, city staff time is going towards that $37,000 match. We did extend the grant deadline or timeframe to complete it was supposed to be done at the end of this year. We extended it to June 30th. It is a complex problem. It's taking a while to work through it. And we also reallocated some of the funding within the categories that were in the grant based on how we were spending it with a selected alternative to optimize the spending. Onto the budget amendment. Now, the main thing I want you to see here is the bottom stuff. The original project total was $200,000. What we're asking for is another 55,500. So the timing is in the, the, the two graphs or the two tables above. So we, we budgeted $100,000 last fiscal year. We only spent about 37,000. So we need to push forward or transfer that $63,000 into this year. So that gives you what our actual amount left for the project is. And 218, 290 is what you get when you add the 550 to it. Next slide. So this is just shows what Wade Trim's fees, the sewer lining cost, or design cost, I should say, the water main replacement design cost, and then the soils investigation. And then over to the right, just kind of gives a breakdown of where the original budget is, where the money has been allocated to. Admarsh was hired for the survey and SME was hired for the geotechnical. Again, we did that for that. So that's it. I went over a lot of information quick. It is very technical. I tried to put it at a level that explained it without getting too far down in the weeds.
Great.
Emily, could you back up a few slides to where it showed the two options and what we got basically? Yeah, so I'm, I'm, I'm looking at the cost difference and obviously one is better than the other in that it's higher. But am I reading that right? It's only three quarters of a foot higher.
Yes.
And that's going to make a difference in how many, how many flood occurrences?
Go to the supplemental slides. I'll tell you when to stop. That's the indonation analysis. This basically shows as the water level rises, that's the red, where it breaches and ends up on the road. So you can keep going. Okay, this slide right here. So Mark Prebeck, the hydraulic genius with Wade Trim, he actually put this together. And the red line is what we really need to key in on there. So basically it's a statistical approach to look at when we have high lake levels. And if you follow, the, the left side is your return frequency and the left, and the right side is your elevation. So that, it's a logarithmic scale, but that's, that curve is how you get to where you are on it. And if you go one slide over, it's based on the data that is right there. So the lake level data that you have. So again, the blue line is going to be your static lake levels and the, the red line is going to be when you have wind-induced storm events that cause it to rise.
No, I got that part. I was just saying the, the, the elevation change in the road or what we would be protected from is only three quarters of a foot difference. Is that what, that's what I read? Versus raising the road and the alternative, which was the, the curb and the pump.
And the longevity, I think.
Okay, this is one thing when we were in the design meetings, it got a little bit confusing to correct, to be quite honest. Okay, because you have right now, what do people see? They see it rains, the road floods and we need to pump it off. Okay, as we got into this more, we were worried more about a permanent breach. Okay, once that happens, you're not pumping anything. It's on the road all of the time. And we started talking to like public safety vehicles and they, they essentially said, I can't remember if it was three inches or six inches of water. We have the wastewater plant down there that serves 60,000 people. I mean, that's why we got the grant, quite honestly. It's because workers have to be able to get back and forth from there. And there were times that they were worried about blowing out their cars because it's been so deep and they have to get there. The people on Island Point condos in the emergency. So I understand, you know, it's not a lot of difference in water, but that can make a big difference on whether people can get through it or not.
Okay. But I was reading that correctly. It's, we're talking about a really less than a foot difference between the two proposals of what?
That is true.
Okay.
Now, I will say that the road actually goes from 585 to 584. So I'm giving you worst case low point.
Right.
Because when you go down a road, you typically don't want a road just to be flat.
Right.
Because you, you need some longitudinal grades so it'll drain. You also have transverse, your crown and your road. But if you just, if you try to go one way flat, you're generally going to have problems.
Right. And just from experience of driving down that road many times, which I have, there are only a couple of spots that seem to flood regularly. And you're talking about doing the entire length. And that's just a situation where if we're going to do part of it, we're going to do the whole road. Is that the thought process? Because the, the, the west end where you come off of.
By Salt Roofing?
Yes.
Yeah, that business.
That's, that's never underwater.
That's way high. Yeah.
Yeah. And my point is we're doing the whole road. It's shown as the whole road. Because once we're in there, we want to redo water sewer, everything.
Can you pop back to the slide that had the, the profile and the red line? Right now, alls we're calling for to do is 2,200 feet of it. That's not the full length of the road because other portions of the road are higher.
Yeah, that one.
So we actually have money in the budget to mill and resurface the area south of there into Island Point condos.
Okay.
We were talking about crushing and shaping Anchors Court. I think that's going to get delayed. Getting the water to the river and the Morrison Channel gets tricky too. We have a plan for it. I'm not sure that plan's going to work, quite honestly, but I'm not going to get into details on that tonight.
Okay.
All right. Did I answer your question? I feel like I've missed it.
You, you, you did. I'm just, I'm, I'm trying to.
Just not visualizing the depth.
It feels like it should be.
Yeah, and I'm just trying to, to feel reassured. It sounds to me like we're spending money on an engineering plan that we don't. Yeah, and I'm just trying to to feel reassured. It sounds to me like we're spending money on an engineering plan that we don't know if it's going to work.
I'm going to ask you to go back to the inundation at maps that are shown there, the ones with all the red on them.
Yeah.
So what they do is they they build a DTM, a digital terrain model. So it's three-dimensional, right? And then they basically can put a plate across it at the elevation. So in this case, at five eighty-three, we're not flooding the road.
Okay.
Now you go to five eighty-three point two five and it starts at the next slide. You know, to me, it looks like it's coming into it or getting on the road. But really, when it starts to breach and head on the road, is it five eighty-three point five?
Okay.
And then you go higher, one step higher. If I and and now it's coming from multiple places. So it's going to be even worse, you know. So you're in that range. We're trying, you know, we're trying to hit that right range. Now, I will say, everything that we're basis basing this on is statistics of past storms, right? So if there's climate change and that sort of thing.
It may get worse.
And if it gets worse, then it may not perform like that. But this is based on what's out there and what they can analyze the the data.
Okay. And when you talked about the inability to re- remove water toward Morrison Channel, that's in the alternate that we're not going to take, which is the pump?
What happens is when you have lower lake levels, there's going to be a diversion chamber. And if you go back to what we're doing down at Public Works now with the diversion chamber. Process here, but they're doing the same thing there. Okay. So what we're going to do is when lake levels are lower and it can flow by gravity.
Yep.
We're just going to flow by gravity. When it comes up, the diversion chamber, and I'm not going to try to explain it, but it basically will pump around it. So you have a check valve so that water can't come back at you. But we'll be able to pump around it.
Okay.
Any other questions? Nope, nope, nope. All right. Well, it's the pleasure of the commission.
I move to approve the following items to continue progress on the Anchors Way High Water Infrastructure Grant Project to approve the selected alternative recommended by Wade Trim and City Staff to approve a budget amendment in the two oh four fund by transferring the unspent balance from fiscal year twenty-three to fiscal year twenty-four and increasing the fiscal year twenty-four appropriation by fifty-five thousand five hundred dollars to bring the total project budget to two hundred fifty-five thousand dollars five hundred. To approve the number three, to approve the October twenty-third twenty-twenty-four change order request with Wade Trim revising the total design and bid package preparation fees to one hundred sixty-one thousand seven hundred thirty-five dollars. Number four, to approve the October four twenty-twenty-four proposal from Point Blue for a not-to-exceed amount of forty-four thousand four hundred sixty-two and the attached agreement with Point Blue incorporating the same. And authorize the Attorney Schmidt to prepare an amendment to the agreement with Wade Trim to add water and sewer design services as described, and upon completion, authorize City Manager Hackworth to sign the amendment with Wade Trim and the agreement with Point Blue.
Support.
Any public comment on the matter? All right, Abby called the rule.
Commissioner Fernandez?
Yes.
Mayor Thomas?
Yes.
Commissioner Binkley?
Yes.
Commissioner Sorolla?
Yes.
Commissioner Orey?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, on to new business item number twelve, proclamation, National Care at Home Month. Let me get there. Let me get there.
Page one eighty-four.
I'm getting there. I'm getting there. Sorry, I was still reading all about the one eighty-four?
One eighty-five.
Oh, sorry. That's not a point boost. You can type it in here, too.
Yeah, but it's not one eighty-five.
Here, here, just let me take yours.
Read them in.
Oh, I have my proclamation, but we have we have a motion we have to do first, correct? Where's the motion? Oh, here you have this. Yeah. Okay, I apologize. Is Heidi here? Oh, hi, Heidi. Sorry. So I spoke with Heidi and we have done this in the past. We're going to do this again. So I moved to adopt the following proclamation declaring the month of November to be a National Care at Home Month in the city of Saint Joseph. We approved this before I read all this, so I read this. Okay. Whereas for more than half a century, care at home has supported millions of patients nationwide, allowing them to recover from acute illness or injury, navigate activities in their daily lives, or spend their final months at home surrounded by loved ones. Whereas home care offers a person-centered approach to treatment, including expert medical care, quality symptom control, and comprehensive pain management as a foundation of care. Whereas beyond providing physical treatment, home care improves the quality of life for patients by allowing them to remain where they'd most like to reside, and in the case of hospice, attends to patients' emotional, spiritual, and family needs. Whereas in addition to helping patients, home care provides support, respite, in some cases, counseling services to patients, families, and loved ones. Whereas in an increasingly fragmented and difficult to navigate medical system, home care is one of the areas of healthcare that demonstrates how care can and should work at its best for its patients, offering a full continuum of services. Whereas millions of Americans recovering from acute illness or injury or living with serious or life-limiting illnesses and their loved ones receive care from home care, hospice, and palliative care providers and communities throughout the United States each year. Whereas home care organizations are advocates and educators about advanced care planning that help individuals make decisions about the care they want and empowers them to be the architects of their care plan. Whereas the central philosophy of home care puts patients first, ensuring a coordinated and person-centered approach to care, protecting patient choice and access to individualized services based on a patient's unique cares, needs, and wishes. Whereas care at home is a valuable resource that should be available for all Americans and their loved ones. And whereas our local nonprofit hospice and palliative care provider, Corwell Health and Hospice and Palliative Care of Southwest Michigan, formerly Carrying Circle, has served the community for over forty years. Now, therefore, the Saint Joseph City Commission proclaims November twenty-twenty-four as National Care at Home Month and encourages citizens to increase their understanding and awareness of home, hospice, and palliative care, discuss their health care wishes with their families, and observe this month with appropriate activities and programs. Do we vote now or can do we have some? You move the motion. Okay.
I move to adopt that proclamation as presented by Michelle.
Okay, support. All right, any public comment on the matter? Nothing? All right.
We don't hear from Heidi before we
Sure.
Yeah, well, no, thank you so much. This is my colleague Angela Varga. She does the same thing that I do. We do community relations for for hospice and palliative care. And it's an honor to be here to recognize this proclamation because it's really important work. I really appreciate it. Yeah, I just want to say that a lot of people wait to hear about hospice when it's a crisis. We just encourage people to, you know, learn about it sooner rather than later. And it's not what people think it is. We're often surprised at what people think it is. We have patients on services for a year, like a year or two years, and they're doing okay, you know, and their families are really happy and supported. And, you know, we're just encouraging people to really not be afraid to call, and that anyone can call. You don't need a doctor to look for a person in hospice. So a person call from themselves or their, you know, neighbor or their pastor or their friend. So we just encourage people to learn about it.
And I am personally grateful. I'm sure it affects many, many, many people, and and we've had in our families. So yeah, I'm very grateful for it.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, I guess Abby called the rule.
Mayor Thomas?
Yes.
Commissioner Binkley?
Yes.
Commissioner Sorolla?
Yes.
Commissioner Orey?
Yes.
Commissioner Fernandez?
Yes.
All right. That moves us along to item number thirteen, proclamation, Family Court Awareness Month.
Awesome. So I received this request from Protective Parents Michigan to declare November Family Court Awareness Month. Family court is something that, you know, the decisions made in family court have life and death consequences for, you know, the children impacted and can change, you know, family's life. Something that I know a little bit about. You know, my wife is a foster care worker. She's part of that. And you know, while I, as an elected official, may not be able to take tangible actions, you know, to, you know, within family court, one thing that we can do is do these proclamations to bring awareness about the importance of family court and the decisions that they make. I'm going to go ahead and read an excerpt from from this proclamation in the interest of time and then allow our friends here from Protective Parents Michigan to say a few words on what family court means to them. But whereas the mission of Family Court Awareness Month, F C A M, is to raise awareness about the importance of a family court system that prioritizes child safety and acts in the best interests of children. F C A M also aims to improve recognition among court professionals, legislators, and the public that many family court decisions have profound and lasting impacts on the lives of children and families, making it essential that these decisions are informed by the latest research and best practices in child safety. Whereas F C A M is dedicated to educating judges and family court professionals on the importance of incorporating evidence-based, peer-reviewed research into their decision-making. And whereas Family Court Awareness Month aims to encourage collaboration among legislators, advocates, professionals, and the community to improve family court practices, ensuring they are guided by evidence-based research and prioritize the safety and best interests of the children. Now, therefore, the Saint Joseph City Commission proclaims the month of November to be Family Court Awareness Month.
I move to adopt the proclamation as presented by Commissioner Fernandez, declaring November to be Family Court Awareness Month.
I support. Any public comment on the matter?
I'd like to say a few words.
Please.
It just disappeared. Yeah, I have it. I haven't touched it. Good evening. My name is Lisa, and this is my son. And I am with Protective Parents Michigan. And we are so grateful for the proclamation that you are offering to bring to light during Family Court Awareness Month. I would like to thank the city of Saint Joseph and now for acknowledging that child safety should be the priority in family court and custody decisions. One in three families in Michigan are directly impacted by domestic violence. But domestic violence affects each one of us in our communities. Now, you can imagine with the growth that you're talking about in this community, that's one in three magnified. Right? The health and safety of children and families is directly linked to the well-being and functioning within the community. Proper training on abuse can reduce incidents of domestic violence that might otherwise require more resources from your communities. We all need to be aware of what happens in family courts to keep our children safe. Because when a woman makes a decision to leave because of their situation, maybe even works to create a safety plan or exit plan, or when she finally reaches a point in which she decides to leave, abuse often escalates at that point and follows them and their children into the family court system. Post-separation abuse in the family court puts the children in harm's way because abusive parents are more likely to seek sole custody and are successful seventy percent of the time, rendering often families fractured. I've seen and heard from other mothers who have had breastfeeding children all the way to those who have children some of age of majority and others not age of majority, which was my case. Tragically, abuse is not understood or believed by the courts, and fifty-eight thousand children in the U S are ordered into unsupervised contact with parent. I want to share some statistics so you can see why family court reform is needed. Sixty percent of the perpetrators are who who abuse their spouse will also abuse their children. Adverse childhood experiences such as domestic abuse negatively impacts the child's environment, their relationships, and their mental and physical health. And that can carry into their adulthood as well. Many are denied their lived experiences through the different organizations that they have to work with or even just move on is what they get told. Most child abuse is perpetuated in the family by a parent. Children are three times as likely to be shot at home than in a mass school shooting. One child dies every six days amid child custody fights and family court cases. Many of these deaths could have been prevented if the courts considered evidence of past abuse and implemented safe parenting time plans. Research indicates that allegations of child abuse are regularly discounted by the courts when raised in the custody cases. Less than one-fourth are believed. That's astonishing. And if the abusive father claims the mother is alienating the children, one out of fifty-one child sexual abuse claims are believed. Judges really need to consider the past history of abuse when considering making custody decisions. Children would would not be removed in such cases from a protective parent from their home or where the child feels safe and be forced to live with an abusive parent. We're trying to shed a light on family court so changes can be made to ensure the knowledge about the different types of abuse. Yes, we all hear of the deaths, which are tragic in the state of Michigan and around the entire country. But there are all sorts of other forms of abuse.
Did you want to talk to anything about your experience?
All right. When there's a memory that sticks in my head that I will never forget, it haunts me to this day. There was a day where she went to court and we were expecting her back at a time. And this is when I was living with my siblings seven years ago. And the we heard a knock at the door and we weren't expecting it. And next thing we knew, someone had broken through the glass around the front door and was breaking in. And there was an entourage of people that came in with my father who was not with us, living with others at the same time, and he was abusive. And we freed him greatly. So he broke in. I went and hid in my space where I had an exit and locked the door. And my siblings were banging on the door of my space. They're begging me to be let in. And I knew that since I was an adult and they were minors, there was nothing I could do to protect them, and I felt very helpless. And so I fled and escaped. But it was clear to me that if I had if I had if I had done anything to help them escape or to protect them, I would have, I could have been charged with kidnapping since I was an adult. So there was nothing I could do, and it was very hard. And since then, I've had very little ability to reach my siblings. I've been cut off, and that was over seven years ago. So I have missed birthdays. I miss all Christmas, Thanksgiving with them. And we're very close siblings. We are, they were my best friends. And if the system would have done something differently, maybe this wouldn't have gone this way. Thank you.
Our children's lives are literally dependent on the courts becoming educated on these issues and many others. And Family Courts Awareness Month really helps those from especially involved with Protective Parents Michigan because those are typically mothers, not always, but typically mothers who are affected. And many of the families are fractured, divided, separated. It has been over seven, seven years, two months, almost three months since we have all been together. I also have not been able to have contact during that time. My mother has not been able to see her grandchildren. My mother has not been able to see her grandchildren. Cousins have not been able to see cousins. It has destroyed our lives, rendered us homeless for quite a long period of time, living out of a tent, the two of us, because we eventually were able to reunify, but the other children were not. We lived out of our van for a long time, and I'm not alone. These are the same stories that one mother after another has experienced and one child after another has experienced, and none should ever have to go through such things. So we generously thank you for proclaiming November as Family Court Awareness Month and doing a beautiful job of your proclamation. We hope that these community connections that we can draw together to shed light and form circles of support in the schools, in the community, in the social organizations, anything you can do to put your arms around especially the children to keep them safe and validate them so they don't have to enter into adulthood caring. This is hard for me because I have the younger children and the older children. But I want to leave this with you. When we finally got access to our home where we lived with the other kids, their father, I had already been divorced for several years. But when I finally got access to my home again to get boxes, it was very hard to unpack those boxes because it was more trauma. But when I finally got into this one box, this is what I found hidden. Mom, I love you so much. I don't know if I will ever see you again until I'm 18. I'm scared. I need support from people. I don't know if she ever got the support that she needed, but I do know she needed to be able to be with her mother and her brother and her grandmother and her cousins. And this is the case for so many. So thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We had a motion and a second. Okay, all right, Abby, call the roll. Commissioner Binkley?
Yes.
Commissioner Searola?
Yes.
Commissioner Ory?
Yes.
Commissioner Fernandez?
Yes.
Mayor Thomas?
Yes.
All right, moving on to item number 14, Special Event Application Blossom Time Events.
Sorry. So we've got applications, and you want to just dive right in?
First, I'd like to thank you for telling your story, and I wish you both the best. Hi, my name is Anna Appner, and I'm the president of the Blossom Time Festival. I'm very pleased to be here, and you're wondering, why is Blossom Time here in October? Well, guess why we're here? Why we're here is because it's seven months away from our parade. And little do people realize how long it takes to put a parade on. So first of all, I'd like to thank the city and the commissioners and all the public works that helped us get this parade rolling down the street. Blossom Time, a little bit of history in case you're not familiar with us, is 100, over 119 years old. We are considered Michigan's oldest and largest multi-community festival, right here, in the state of, right here in Michigan, and home base here is in St. Joseph and Benton Harbor. We are proud that our parade is the only parade in the country that runs through two cities, which is St. Joseph and Benton Harbor. Pretty remarkable feat. And we're also proud to say our parade has been continuously going since 1924, May the 14th. We had a little break because they had World War II, and then we started right back up. So since 1954, this parade has rolled down Benton Harbor and St. Joseph streets. And it's pretty exciting to think that you, as the residents of the community, have supported us and have continued to support us. It's not a small feat to put a parade together. It's not a small feat to run a festival. But we do it as a labor of love, and we hope you all understand that and come out and support us. One of the things I always like to say to people is, at some point in that parade, the visitor will say, I've had, I've been in the parade, I've had my grandmother ride a float on the parade, I've had a brother march in the parade, somebody's had somebody in that parade, and that makes us pretty proud to know that all of you are still here supporting us each year. So thank you. I'm very pleased to be able to introduce tonight the new chairman of the parade. And to my left here is Jeff Alish. Jeff serves on the Blossom Time Executive Board with me. He's our vice president, and he's also the treasurer. So Jeff came to me in June, and he knew that we were looking for a new parade chairman. Our parade chairman, Dana Kosminsky, who did a great job, has decided to retire more into her real estate business, but not having so much time to dedicate, because it takes a little bit of time to dedicate this parade. But Jeff said, you know, I think I might like to give it a try. So I'm very excited to be able to introduce you to Jeff and have him say a few words of what's been going on in this parade since July of this year.
Thank you, Anna. So far, we have been cleaning up from last year. We've already got all the applications for the 2025 parade set and ready to go. They're available on the website, I believe. We have been sending them out left and right feverishly as fast as we can. If anybody needs an application, you can get one through the Blossom Time office or the website. But we are, we're very excited. We're hoping it's one of our best years yet. We're working to really bring some new, great, fun things to the parade this year. And yeah, that's, that's where we're at.
We also need convertibles.
Convertibles, vintage cars, special units.
Yes.
You know them, you got them.
If you know someone who wants to dress up as a clown, we'd love to see them do that. But anything you can do to help us, we also do look for volunteers. So if anybody has something, you know, they think, well, you know, I don't really want to, you know, volunteer the whole year with the festival, but maybe I can volunteer Parade Day? Hello, we'd love to have you. So think about us. And yes, the Queens will be starting soon. This Saturday will be the first community pageant. So now in the paper, you'll start to see our Queens roll through, but then knowing our big pageant will be in April, as we choose our Miss Blossom Time and Mr. Blossom Time. And then, of course, in May, our Crown Jewel Event, the Grand Fol Parade. So thank you all for having us, and we hope to see you all soon.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Any questions?
Any questions?
No. All right. What is the pleasure of the commission?
I move to approve the request for the Blossom Time events as submitted and to authorize staff to issue special event permits.
Support.
Any public comments? All right. Abby, call the roll. Commissioner Binkley?
Yes.
Commissioner Searola?
Yes.
Commissioner Ory?
Yes.
Commissioner Fernandez?
Yes.
Mayor Thomas?
Yes.
All right, on to item number 15, Special Event Application, MLK Monument Unveiling Ceremony.
All right, the Unified Civic Monument Project will be holding their unveiling ceremony for the Mountaintop Monument in honor of Martin Luther King Jr. on November 19th of this year. The event will start at 10:30 at the Upton Arboretum. It will be free and open to the public. They will also have buses transporting attendees between Benton Harbor and St. Joe, as they did for the Groundbury King in June. Several attendees will also walk from Benton Harbor to the St. Joseph site prior to the event. Of note, Martin Luther King III will also be present for the ceremony and make some remarks. So they're just requesting approval of their special event application for their event on November 19th. I think there's a few members here, if you have any questions.
So the the event starts in Benton Harbor or St. Joe? It is starting in St. Joe at 10:30 and then go to Benton Harbor? Thank you. Any other questions?
No questions. It's just exciting that you have such a guest coming.
And it's exciting to see after all this planning and preparation that it's the unveiling. Be cool. Sure?
Yes, yeah.
My name is Tammy Faver. I'm with Crassill Art Center, and we're a partner on this project. The Unified Civic Monuments Project is a project that was envisioned by Sharon and Mack Brown of the African American History and Literature Gallery in Benton Harbor. And Crassill, Lake Michigan College, and a whole host of other cultural and arts organizations have come together to help realize two monuments, one in St. Joseph at the Arboretum and one in Benton Harbor at Dwight P. Mitchell City Center Park. They are bronze monuments in honor of Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. They're very beautiful. The one in St. Joseph has Martin Luther King with two young girls. One is holding and about to release a dove, and one is feeding the Dove of Peace. And the monument is cardinally directed towards the second monument in Benton Harbor. So Benton Harbor's monument is a seat at the table, with the concept being that everybody has a seat at the table, and there's literally a table with seats to be taken. And then, of course, both feature Dr. Martin Luther King. So we're really excited. The unveiling is at 10:30 in the Arboretum. Starting at 10 o'clock, there'll be some some light music and festivities to sort of entertain folks as they're arriving. It'll be brief, it'll be, you know, less than a half an hour, and then people will head over to Benton Harbor. That monument unveiling starts at 11:30. And then, following that, at 1:30 at Lake Michigan College, Martin Luther King III will be in dialogue with a host of community members, and that is a free public event as well that people can sign up for, and it's kind of a first-come, first-served in Grand Upton Hall. So, thank you. We're excited. Thank you.
Yeah, very exciting. We took public comments, no other public comments? Okay. Abby, call the roll. We didn't?
No.
We didn't?
Okay. This was just the presentation. However, I move that we approve the special event application for the Martin Luther King Jr. Monument Unveiling Ceremony.
Support.
No, any public comments? All right. Abby, call the roll. Commissioner Searola?
Yes.
Commissioner Ory?
Yes.
Commissioner Fernandez?
Yes.
Mayor Thomas?
Yes.
Commissioner Binkley?
Yes.
Thank you. All right, item number 16, Sandbar Grill Sound Ordinance Extension.
So I can do a quick overview. Tom Jennings is here as well, and I think can answer any questions that you have. So as you might remember, this summer, the commission granted an extension to the noise ordinance, allowing the Sandbar Grill to extend amplified sound from 10:00 p.m. to 11:00 p.m. on 12 specific nights from July through September. Those 12 nights were identified or sort of approved through the Michigan Liquor Control Commission, and we then approved the additional hour. But the Sandbar only held 11 events, so by the state's, I guess, authority, he's got the ability to hold one more. And so he'd like to come back and/or he is coming back to ask for permission to have that last event be held on New Year's Eve, December 31st, and again, extend the noise ordinance from 10 to 11 p.m. We went back, Steve isn't here tonight, but we did look back at complaints. We know that there's been some feedback from time to time when there are outdoor events at the Sandbar. There were only two complaints this summer called into public safety. And Steve said, as has been the case in the past, Tom and the Sandbar team have been very responsive in turning down the sound. This request for New Year's Eve would have a band playing outdoors, but there would be a tent with sides, which would certainly help with the noise. It's also winter, so I would imagine most people are indoors with windows closed. So that's, that's the request. Tom, anything I missed?
Yes, I met with 10 people that do the tent sound at Notre Dame today, as a matter of fact. And he assured me that basically this with the sides, that you don't have to worry about the noise factor, because they basically take away. And then, we're assuming at that time of the year, we're not going to be, we'd like to run until midnight because of New Year's Eve. In fact, that would be, yeah, we'd like to run until midnight because it's New Year's Eve, and I think like with the sides on it, it shouldn't be a big deal. It was in the other day, I wouldn't worry about it, but it is New Year's Eve. So we have a big band that wants to do it, and it's kind of a, kind of a pre-plan to see if we want to expand the Sandbar. If you build on it, as some of you may know, we've got plans that have already been worked done by John Elligretti, and we plan on continuing to fix up that building and enlarge it a little bit, not hugely, but to improve it. In fact, the city's been cooperative in that regard with going through the planning. So that's our game plan. It's going, it's going to be quite a big ordeal to put it together, but I'd love to do it. I think it'd be, I think it'd be fun and be a good event. It's on our property, it's not on city property, so.
This request here says till 11:00 p.m., but I just heard you say midnight? Are you, are you asking for midnight, or are you asking for 11:00?
I am asking for midnight because it's New Year's Eve. That's partially my fault for not clarifying that better without me.
I would, I would want to consult with Steve, who's not here, about going past 11:00 p.m. He and I have spoken about the 11:00 p.m. request, and I know that he's comfortable. I wouldn't want to extend an hour without consulting with him.
We could work that out later.
Do you want to put this request on hold then until we can consult?
I'd love to put the request up for now, till 11:00, and then perhaps we've got to.
Bring it back to midnight.
Yeah, we'll have another meeting mid-November and another one in early December.
That makes sense.
So we'll start today with the request for 11:00 p.m., and then you can come back.
Can we, can we do that and put in the motion that we conditionally approve 12 with Steve's blessing? So that way, we don't have to roll this all the way till November if he's trying to make a big plan into December?
Yeah.
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 Okay. I don't have a problem with that.
Okay. And I'd just like to point out that not only will with the tent and the side walls, will there be less sound escaping, there will be more held inside, which might mean that you might not need to have the music quite as loud, because there'll be less sound escaping. So by all accounts, there should be less of a nuisance to any surrounding neighborhoods.
Can't imagine in New Year's Eve, although the weather could be unknown.
No, unlikely.
We never know.
Okay.
Who wants to make that motion?
I move to approve extending the amplified sound at the Sandbar Grill to midnight on Tuesday, 31st, 2024, pending approval by our Public Safety Officer.
Can we, can we say 11:00 and conditionally to 12:00?
Okay, yeah, okay. Do you need me to repeat it? Okay. I move to approve extending amplified sound at the Sandbar Grill to 11:00 p.m. on Tuesday, December 31st, 2024, with approval by our Public Safety Officer Steve, to midnight.
Okay. Support.
Public comment on the matter? All right, Abby, call the roll. Commissioner Ory?
Yes.
Commissioner Fernandez?
Yes.
Mayor Thomas?
Yes.
Commissioner Binkley?
Yes.
Commissioner Searola?
Yes.
All right, thank you. On to item number 17, Acceptance of Bequest.
This is a request to accept a donation of money that came to the city from a former longtime resident, Sunny Schmaltz. She passed away, and in her will, she left a portion of her estate to the city and wanted to recognize the city for the generous treatment she received for many years, which was awesome. She directed that the distribution be allocated to the Parks Department for the maintenance and improvement of its parks. Before the estate can be closed, they have to make final distributions, and so there needs to be consent to accept the gift and any amount that was designated. The total amount that was shown was $12,148.43. So again, we'd like to recognize her for her generous gift, which was very thoughtful. And the request would be to accept that amount of money to be allocated to Parks Department for the maintenance and improvement of its parks. It would be designated for a specific improvement. I think Greg Grothaus is working with the Parks Department, Emily, to determine what that might be. But again, it would be something that wasn't part of routine maintenance. It would be, you know, something special.
Okay. Wonderful. Any questions? No. All right. Let's get a motion.
Well, I'd like to thank Sunny Schmaltz for her generous gift and recognize her generosity to the city and accept bequest from the estate of Sunny J. Schmaltz to the city of St. Joseph in the amount of $12,148.43 allocated to the Parks Department for the maintenance and improvement of its parks and designated for a specific improvement and authorize the city manager to execute all necessary documents for acceptance of the same.
Support.
Any public comment? All right, Abby, call the roll.
Commissioner Fernandez?
Yes.
Mayor Thomas?
Yes.
Commissioner Binkley?
Yes.
Commissioner Sorolla?
Yes.
Commissioner Ory?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Next up is the downtown holiday tree lights.
I promise this the last time you'll hear from me tonight. So this year, as was the case last year, the city budgeted $18,000 for holiday lights in the downtown. This amount ensures that there are lights on all the streets, on all the trees on State Street. The DDA would like to again expand the lights to the downtown side streets, Broad and Pleasant Street, using DDA funds as they did last year. At its October 28th meeting, since it was this morning, the DDA passed the motion to allocate $4,400 from the DDA fund balance in addition to the $5,000 allocated in their operating budget to light the remaining trees in the downtown. The lighting of the trees has been done by housemasters and managed by city staff. The price for this year's tree lighting is the same as it has been the last, I believe, two years now. So it has been unchanged and it's been very well received.
Thank you. Any questions?
Nope.
No questions? All righty. What's the pleasure of the commission?
I move to approve the installation of holiday lights in the downtown district by housemaster. Amount of $27,400 to be paid, $18,000 from account 101-740-9400 from the Downtown Development Authority and to authorize the city manager to execute the agreement on behalf of the city.
I support. Any public comment on the matter?
I just wanted to mention that they've been incredibly nice working with us at 403 State Street right there, but often they put in holiday music and just as a, before they put it up and then we have to ask nicely and then they move it. They have put it like five foot from our bed.
You don't want to hear that at night when you go to
I like Christmas music, but I just thought I would mention that as they're putting it up.
I think the, Greg, is that us, the Christmas music, or is that through St. Joe today?
Through St. Joe today.
Paul just left, it was such strategic timing. We will pass that feedback along.
Yes.
Okay, any other public comment? All right. Abby, call the roll.
Mayor Thomas?
Yes.
Commissioner Binkley?
Yes.
Commissioner Sorolla?
Yes.
Commissioner Ory?
Yes.
Commissioner Fernandez?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, next on to reports, Crassel Art Fair 2024 report.
So Tammy and Jamie, just Tammy, just Tammy. We lost Jamie, just Tammy is here to talk about the summer's art fair.
This is just our annual report out for Crassel Art Fair on the Bluff. We're not making any requests tonight, just to be clear. So we'll come, we'll come back in a month or two with our event application for 2025, but we just wanted to let you know how the year went. And first and foremost, we really do want to thank the city. I think the team does an outstanding job. We really have a great relationship working with the police and public works and security throughout the event. We don't usually have many problems at all with the event, but this year we're proud to say we had zero theft and zero incidences, so we're really that. This year, we saw close to 23,000 people in attendance, which is on par with last year. So right around the same, we did the same scale of events, we brought in 171 artists. We do use, we had 250 community volunteers involved this year, so we can't say enough thanks to the business sponsors, the individuals, and all the hours and the time and energy that people give to this event to to help us make it happen. We had seven food trucks participate throughout the weekend. We opened the parking lots for the city in the evening and that went very well. And again, we, you know, we had the great help of the public safety team throughout. We went through a lot of water because it was really hot this year, so Jamie outlines that in the facts, we did 150 cases. And we were ranked again in the top 50 of the 200 best art fairs in the nation, so we're really happy about that ranking as well. This was our first year doing suggested donation and we we moved forward with that. Unfortunately, we did see a significant loss due to that. So the event this year raised $90,000 in total funds for the Crassel, for the Crassel Art Center. We operate on a $1.7 million annual operating budget, so that's $90,000 fundraiser for us, but that was a $30,000 decrease from last year's. So with that, you know, that is a reality and a concern for us as we move forward and we understand the direction and the suggested donation. One of the experiences that we did have and we've spoken with with the city about this in our wrap-up is that we did have trouble on the bluff with the QR codes and with people using their Wi-Fi. So we had QR codes as part of the suggested donation and when people would scan that, their phone would turn and we would see them just put their phone back in their pocket because they weren't able to quickly make a donation. And we also had several artists this year in particular who had difficulty making their sales using their square. So we know that that's something that the city is looking into for other reasons, but the the Wi-Fi functioning was was a problem this year. And then for the year ahead, we are, we will be looking to the city for direction. We know that we use parking lots and that the paid parking is coming up, so naturally we'll be asking about that or looking for guidance in that in our application for 2025. Those are the big things, of course, we, you know, we would love to advocate for the city to to update its festival policy and that might give us additional guidance for some of these concerns. And other than that, we just want to ask you all to save the date for 2025. We're looking at July 12th through 13th and we'll come back with a special event application for that. And I'm happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Was the the Wi-Fi problem a problem in past years as well or is it just unique for this year?
It was particularly troublesome this year, it's been a problem in the past. And so I've learned more about, there's been sort of different ways of trying to mitigate that in the past, but the bluff is a difficult spot for Wi-Fi.
Okay.
This was the first year you used the QR code for donation?
It is.
So that's probably what magnified the problem. I think it's never been that good on the bluff.
Yeah, 23,000 people trying to access it probably didn't
I will say I tried to access it and so it wouldn't and so I was going to give the girls cash and they said they had no means to take cash.
That's, I don't understand that because every gate we had a donation box for cash, but I'm sorry to hear that, but thank you for letting me know.
They were on like the, they were on, they were down farther at a crossing area.
Okay. I'm not certain.
Okay.
We had, I think, six gates with with boxes, but I don't deny that that happened, so I'm so thank you for letting me know.
Maybe maybe if you just let your staff and volunteers know if somebody does say they're at fair, they could direct them to where the boxes are.
Sure, of course.
Just an idea.
Yep. Absolutely.
Tammy, I know that parking, of course, will be forefront, but you mentioned other just festival policies. Is there anything else that you'd like us to just kind of pay attention to in context of the Crassel?
No, I haven't looked at the, no.
Okay.
But I'm happy to give that feedback, you know, I'm happy to look at the policy in depth and give better feedback on that.
Okay.
Well, it was a wonderful event.
It was, I'm glad, thank you for coming, thank you for participating. All right, thank you.
Thank you. All right, that moves us along to item number 20, quarterly investment report, PA 20.
Okay, so this is a just report only, no action today. Going forward, I'd like to try and have this on the consent agenda unless you feel like you want me to talk about it each time. If you turn to your packing in the attachments, you'll find this document, which is from the state of Michigan. This instructs us on what we can invest in, but it'll also give us guidance, we have to give a presentation by the investment officer, which is me, to you once a year. We're going to choose to do this quarterly. And so the first one is today and the first page of the agenda, I am just going to list the current interest rates we have. I'll do that each quarter. The second attachment in the packet is the chart, which will list each investment and the fund that resides in. Because governmental accounting, nothing is straightforward, I have to mention, I am not including the Bering Community Foundation in here because that's on our books, but we don't control it. And I'm also not including pension because pensions are controlled by the pension board. Any questions?
No, it sounds like we can look forward to receiving this quarterly and I, myself and Commissioner Sorolla are on the audit committee, so I look forward to diving into this stuff a lot deeper with you.
You said you're choosing to go quarterly, is there a certain reason for that preference?
Because I feel like you need to know. I'm not sure why, it's just annual, but I feel like we should probably tell you more.
Yeah. Great, thank you.
Okay.
All right, thank you. All right, item number 21, FEMA Open House, November 14th, 2024. Bering County Preliminary Flood Insurance Rate Maps Firm and Flood Insurance Study, FIS, dated August 30th, 2024.
So the Federal Emergency Management Agency has scheduled a public meeting to go over some new maps they're working on for the St. Joseph River watershed area, so in the city, that's pretty much our ravines, the St. Joseph River and the Papa River, they've, and that goes all the way through into south end of the county is what we've been looking at for Bering County, but it also picks up some stuff then, I think, in St. Joseph County because it drops down into Indiana. So they're working on that, so they they're releasing a preliminary map for everyone to review. Next year, they plan on submitting or they'll make publishing the 90-day review period, preliminary review period, where people can submit comments if they believe the maps are wrong or incorrect. And all of those things would be coming through the city and you are required to provide scientific data if you believe the map is wrong in your area. So that, we have had a group of people that did that last year when we, or a couple of years ago when FEMA came out with new maps along the lakefront and they were successful in that endeavor after several attempts. So that does not happen very often. So this is just a preliminary meeting with the residents, it is in Benton Town, Benton Harbor, the city of Benton Harbor at the Public Library on November 14th from 4:00 to 6:00. Once they go through that, then they will then do the open or let the documents out for 90-day preliminary review and we'll post those on website. People want to look at how the maps have changed from the current map that was adopted in April of 2024 to what is being proposed on their properties, there's two links on the city's website that you can play with, they're interactive maps and they'll give you side-by-side pictures and stuff, so.
Okay, thank you, any questions? All righty, thank you. All right, item number 22, general election update.
Yes, this is just a reminder that the general election will be on Tuesday, November 5th. City residents have three ways to cast their vote. Again, that's just another reminder, we've been doing that, this will be our third election with early in-person voting, which started on Saturday, October 26th. Absentee voting is also currently underway. The last day to request an absentee ballot to be mailed to you is Friday, November 1st. The clerk's office will be open Saturday, November 2nd from 7:00 AM to 3:00 PM for absentee ballots, new voter registration. The last day to pick up an absentee ballot in person at City Hall is Monday, November 4th, before 4:00 PM. Like I mentioned, early in-person voting began October 26th at the Lake Michigan College Todd Center. That continues through Sunday, November 3rd. City residents can stop into the Todd Center to cast their ballot from 8:30 AM to 4:30 PM each day, except for Wednesday, the 30th, which is from 11:00 to 7:00 PM. And then, of course, there is Election Day, November 5th. You can vote at your assigned precinct, polls are open from 7:00 AM to 8:00 PM. I know this is a lot of information, I've been talking to residents every day. Please contact the clerk's office if you need clarification. We're trying to put up signs, sharing information on our social media to let people know where, when, how you can cast your vote, but definitely take that opportunity and do so.
All right, thank you, any questions? Okay. Moving on to item number 23, upcoming city commission meetings.
Just a quick update, back in the summer, the commission decided that we'd move to a three-week cadence for the winter and that is going to start following this meeting. So after this meeting, we will not meet again until Monday, November 18th at 6:00 PM, followed by Monday, December 9th at 6:00 PM. Then we're going to take a nice long break for the holidays and regroup on Monday, January 16th at 6:00 PM and we'll meet every three weeks following that through the winter.
All right, wonderful. That then moves us along to city manager comments.
Think I'm all talked out, it's been a long night. Thank you.
All right, nothing from you, how about city commission comments?
I know he's not here today, but I'm just commending Steve and his team for their quick response to the school threat that happened. That was, it was great to see the communication come out and just addressed as best we could.
Yes.
Only thing I would say is a big shout out to a local youth sports organization, the St. Joe Racket Football, that just wrapped up a great season. Special thanks to Mayor Thomas for coming to celebrate some of the players on one of the teams that I coach and recognize them for all of their hard work and fun this season, but it's one of those great community things that we have going on and thank you.
It was really fun to play with the kids, but I was really sore the next day, but thank you.
Anything else? All right, I guess that brings us to an end at 8:26 PM, thank you.